Let us pray. Lord, we come before you as a humble people. We ask to, we ask that you guide our hands in our decision making for the people, the property, and the finances of this great city. We ask you to look over the first responders as they work to protect our citizens, and we ask you to continue looking over our great city as you have for the past 200 years. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Leopard.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Councilmember Spar.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
And Councilmember Wilkins.
Here. The record show that all seven members of council are present. Minutes for February 21st, 2023, regular and committee, the whole were distributed. Any questions or corrections? Okay, seeing now the minutes will stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports, starting with the Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Long Community Planning, Councilmember Leopard.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Perry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Personnel and Labor Relations Committee meeting was held on February 27th, starting at 5:15 at the council chambers to discuss mayor's request for legislation 23-11, 23-15, 23-16, 23-17, and 23-18, and any other business to come before the committee. In attendance were Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Thacker, Councilmember Spar, Councilmember Jones, Councilmember Leopard, Mayor Yannantuno, Chief Polly, Chief Chapel, Law Director Howard, and City Administrator Dietrich. Jumped the gun a little bit. The committee first discussed the appointments of Fred Schell and Bill Black, and there are no objections for these appointments being made to their respective committees. We then moved on to mayor's request for legislation 23-16, which pertained to changes to codified ordinances 149. Chief Polly explained needing the ability to add lateral transfers into the department due to the current low interest of potential people wanting to join their field. Polly also explained that after they exhaust the national testing list, they then can look at the lateral transfer list. This will drastically help keep his department staffed with the appropriate amount of officers who are also well-trained for the job. Lateral transfer candidates must meet all civil service requirements currently or have been employed as a peace officer for longer than one year and also be certified by the Ohio Peace Training Academy. Leopard asked about having five years of seniority, which Polly explained that more than five years will count towards it for Tiffin. Thacker asked about the training involved, where Polly explained for a new officer is around 16 weeks, but depending on lateral officer experience, that it could be lower than that. Chief Chapel went on to explain for firefighters that it would require at least one year and be EMT or paramedic and have Level 2 in Ohio with the interview process to remain the same. Thacker motioned to have the law director prepare legislation, and Spar seconded passing three to zero. Next order of business was mayor's request for legislation 23-17, changes to codified ordinances 143. Chief Chapel explained they will no longer require their firefighters to be certified to do fire inspections, but will have pay raise incentives if they are or to be promoted. Another change Chapel was hoping to see was to give all new hires 36 months to complete their EMS or paramedic from their hire date, but must enroll within the first six months. Spar motioned to have law director prepare legislation, and Thacker seconded passing three to zero. Next order of business was mayor's request for legislation, changes to codified ordinances 142. Chief Chapel explained this really was cleaning up the charter around permitting, which is a service we no longer offer. All of our accounts, we are all on third party now, so there's no need to have this language in the charter. Spar motioned, and Thacker seconded three to zero. In other business, our committee discussed the petition process in which to put your name on a ballot for Tiffin City Council. After much lively debate, we decided to hold off discussions until the whole council was together to discuss further. Hearing no other business, the meeting adjourned at 4:35 PM.
Thank you. Any questions? Or Councilmember Perry.
I have one.
Yes?
We just, just want to explain that that section there with codified ordinances 142 was about the alarm system that the city used to have, and they no longer utilize it. So that permitting was for alarms. That's all.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Wilkins.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
No report at this time.
And Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Spar.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Committee of the whole, I'd like to schedule committee, the whole meeting to discuss mayor's request for legislation 23-20 in relation to the ADA transition plan, and then additionally the outcome of the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee regarding the city council petition process as decided in that committee to have that in the broader group for council. I think it would be good to add that as an agenda item as well. So when scheduling this, obviously our next committee, the whole meeting would be prior to the next regular meeting, but I think that we're going to need probably more than 15 minutes to discuss both these items. For the ADA transition plan, do we think a half hour? Do we think an hour?
Matt?
Neither.
I think 30 minutes will handle it.
I would think so. I mean, with the ADA Advisory Committee, it was about a half hour, so.
Okay, and then maybe a half hour for the petition plant or the petition for city council?
I would imagine. It'd be fine.
Okay. So if we started committee, the whole at 6:00 instead of 6:45, would that work for everyone? My only thing is I'm not going to, we out of town for that day, so I will not be able to attend, but I trust you guys will be in good hands with Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Or how do you say it, Danny? Lapord?
Lepard.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to call committee, the whole meeting, or to schedule that for, that is March 20th, I believe, at 6:00 PM in council chambers to discuss mayor's request for legislation number 23-20, as well as the city council petition process. We are now under reports of the officers. Her Honor, Mary Dawn Yannantuno.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have some special guests with us, and we have a proclamation this evening in honor of Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and so I'd like to read a proclamation for them. Whereas individuals with developmental disabilities share a vision for a good life, and whereas each individual has abilities, skills, and talents to enrich the community and people around them, and whereas individuals with and without developmental disabilities live and work side by side across our country and county to form strong, diverse communities, and whereas the most effective way to increase developmental disability awareness is through everyone's active participation in community activities and the openness to learn and acknowledge each individual's contribution, and whereas we encourage all citizens to support opportunities for people with disabilities that include full access to education, support, housing, employment, and recreational activities, and therefore be it resolved, I, Dawn M. Yannantuno, Mayor of the City of Tiffin, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 in the City of Tiffin, Ohio, as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and encourage all members of our community to take the time to get to know someone with a disability and what he or she has to offer. On the sixth day of March in the year of our Lord 20, or 2023, Dawn Yannantuno. And so if somebody would like to give you this.
Dave, do you want to talk about your flyers and hand them out?
I'll hand them out. If you want to talk.
Yes. My name is David Rogers. and when you want, for order, for order, you, uh, draft, order you be, um, um, March 20. March 20. First, first order. Okay.
So you want to talk about this one?
Okay. Get that away. Eating for the kids, one of 10, get kids, get kids, bring them out, good crowd, gonna be a good crowd, about that.
April 1st?
April 1st. Um, may I please? And thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Montel Smith, and I have celebrity basketball game. Celebrity basketball game with Heidelberg University is on March 30th with 50 50 where I fall. And a concession stand available and seats that are available to sell. And the pot seat go to the special basketball team. Bakery Bingo is at on March 23rd, the doors open at 5:00, and the game starts at 5:30. And it's held at the Opportunity Center, Opportunity Center, they're baked goods for sale.
I'm superintendent at the Opportunity Center. I encourage the community to come out to our events. They're a lot of fun. It's a great way of giving back and really seeing the talents that individuals with developmental disabilities have. So I encourage people to come out and play. If you don't want to play for the game, cheer, or just come out, palm Sunday dinner, to help support our parent council. Got some exciting news for council. We have closed, actually this week, all the papers were assigned, actually late last week, for the Opportunity Center to purchase the old cancer center for Mercy and the Optima Building. We were leasing the Optima Building, and the cancer center was vacated. So we're in the process of, pretty soon we'll be going out to bid to renovate, to create an adult a day program there. So the goal is to move the adults out of the current building, which is south of town, to allow greater access to the shopping centers and to the community for folks. So we're excited about that opportunity. For one, growth for us, because we continue to grow. A lot of people don't realize the growth of autism. Today, one in 48 children are born with autism. This caused about a 25% increase over the last four years in individuals being served at the Opportunity Center. So we're seeing a huge growth in children, and we really do need to make room. I know, in talking with the schools, they really like to see us expand the school. So that's one of our plans, is to potentially move the adults out, and either expand the school wing, or move some administrative offices over and relocate. But we've got some good plans, long time in the making, four and a half years. So I think it was a council four years ago talking about this. It just takes a long time sometimes, but we're excited about that opportunity. So I want to thank the community for their support over the years. We're blessed to live in Tiffin and in Seneca County. A lot of community support, and just thank you for everything that you do to support us.
Thank you.
Any questions for any of us?
Very exciting news on the, on the building.
Congrats.
Good luck with all of that, and a lot of programs going on right now with the flyers that you're handing out, and so good luck with all of that also, and we really appreciate you coming in this evening.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
A man's question about to be answered, don't feel out quality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next, I have Department head reports continuing tonight, and third up is Matt Watson, our city engineer, and I know everybody out in the audience is here for this. We have a packed house, and I know they knew it was him. And so, Matt, take it away.
Rick, thank you, Mayor. As always, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to come before council to provide an update, not only to the administration and council, but also to the public. My staff and I put in a lot of hard work daily, so it is nice to kind of step back and reflect when we're putting in this presentation, and just kind of reflect on all the accomplishments that we've gotten accomplished over the last year, and then being able to share those with each of you. So moving into the presentation, the first thing I want to cover is the staff that works hard on a daily basis. It's hard to believe I'm actually entering my 10th year at the city. It's my fifth year that I'm entering in the role of city engineer. But my staff, like I said, they work hard on a daily basis. We have Jason Mortar, he's our assistant city engineer. He's entering his fourth year in that role. Last year, he obtained his professional engineering license, so that was a huge accomplishment for him. And Jason's primary roles are assisting with contract and project management, so he helps me out with that a lot, as well as overseeing the permitting process for our sewer taps, street cut permits, stormwater permits, and private utility company permits. Also, Jason's kind of been our lead guy in our office overseeing our GIS program, and I'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. Next, we have our engineer tech, which is Ryan Steinmetz. He's entering his second year in that role. Ryan's primary duties are being our onsite inspector for both public and private projects, as well as completing our culvert inspections. And one thing to note about Ryan, he's pursuing his stormwater inspector certification, so that'll be a huge asset for us moving forward, and I'll talk a little bit about that stormwater plan later in the presentation as well. Our zoning inspector is Dan Brickner. He's entering his seventh year in that position. In addition to zoning, Dan's our architectural board of review representative, and also oversees our exterior maintenance code. And then lastly, our engineer aide is Dawn Wright, who's entering her third year in that role, and her primary duties is being an administrative assistant to both the engineering and zoning sides of the office. So this is actually the first year that I've given this presentation to council, and I can say that we haven't had any staff changes from the year before. Our office has a lot of different responsibilities, as you'll see as we work through this presentation. So it does take a lot of time to train. And one of the big goals that I've been talking about in the past presentations is that a goal of mine is to develop staff to promote sustainability while also providing a high level of service. So each year that I can come here and say, you know, we're carrying over the same staff from the year before, we're making strides towards achieving that goal. Next, I want to talk a little bit about professional development and public relations. The licensure that I carry as a professional engineer and professional surveyor does require continuing ed, so I have to do 30 hours of continuing ed every two years to maintain those licenses. The continuing ed's not only important from a training aspect, but it's been very beneficial from a networking aspect as well. As you can see there, we attend several trainings throughout the year, but the one that I really want to highlight is the last one on the list, which is the Municipal Engineers Association of Ohio. So this was a new organization that was actually created last year, and this has been one of the biggest assets for me as the city engineer. So what they did last year through the Ohio Municipal League was create this organization for city engineers. We meet twice a year, and at those events, we have training sessions and we also network. One thing that I really want to note in that picture in the top right-hand corner was, I was privileged actually last year at the inaugural Municipal Engineers Association to be the spotlight speaker. So I was chosen to represent the City of Tiffin, and it was very privileging to speak in front of my peers across the state and bring them up to date with all the great things that we're doing in city engineer's office in the City of Tiffin. From a public relations standpoint, I put the road and bridge levy there. So last year, the voters voted to continue that levy for another five years. Spent a lot of time last year outside the work hours promoting the road and bridge levy and promoting the fiscally responsible and effective plan that we've developed with that, and really being transparent. So in addition to, you know, pushing the levy at the time that it was on the ballot, everyone knows that I probably send, everyone probably knows I send out an annual update to the residents, just being transparent on how those extra dollars are being spent, and really proving the fiscal responsible plan that we've developed to date. In addition to that, I try to reach out to the schools. So you see job shadows, Tiffin Middle School participation. The main reason behind that's to promote the engineering and surveying profession. There is a very limited amount of engineers and surveyors in Tiffin and Seneca County, so just trying to get into the schools and promote that profession, and try to teach the kids that, hey, you can go be an engineer, and you can also move back to Tiffin and Seneca County and have a good life in the future. And we're going to need those kids one day to fill the roles that we have, and there's a limited amount of engineers and surveyors out there. So I never pass a job shadow up just for that reason, promoting the profession. In addition to professional development, staff development, it's been a key of mine, really trying to grow as a staff and create a family-based atmosphere in the office. So each year, twice a year, we get together outside the work hours. We have a summer barbecue typically at my house. We get together at Christmas time outside the office, and really just kind to try to engage and get to know more about each other, you know, outside that could be stressful work environment. Likewise, you know, we try to do fun things here and there. We do a March Madness Bracket Challenge winner, you know, gets free lunch from me. So they've been pretty good. I haven't been the one picking all the winners recently. And then we also do an Office Fantasy Football League. So just things like that to, to really engage and build that relationship in the office, and again, trying to create that sustainability and trying to keep that job retention in there, which is key. Functionality and efficiency. So this has been in my presentation every year that I've given to city council. I've been very adamant that improving our functionality to gain efficiencies has been crucial to the office's success to date, and being able to balance and fulfill the demands placed on our office. So these efforts have really been ongoing since I took over in 2019, and these efforts date back to the original office remodel, our scanning initiative, where we scanned pretty much every document in our office that we could fit physically through a scanner. To date, we've scanned over 20,000 documents since 2019, and with those documents, we built a Google File shared drive, which has been very beneficial to me, because this job is not a 40-hour, seven to three job, or seven to four. It's 24/7, and having all those files readily available through that online platform allows me to spread that work out, you know, through all hours of day, or maybe I have an important email I need to answer at night, it's readily available to me. So all those efforts really helped get us organized. And then we have our GIS system. So last year, I gave the update that we were transitioning from our original GIS system to what's called IMGIS, and I'll give Brandon Burner all the credit. He went out and found this platform. Even though we're engineers by trade, we're not GIS specialists by any means, and this IMGIS platform was much more user-friendly, and we felt fit our city best. So over the last year, we transitioned into this IMGIS platform. Again, Jason leading our GIS, as well as Ryan stepping in and doing some assistance with him. We've built 58 data layers within our GIS program. So that's been really rewarding for us, and then I'll take that into the city website. So, you know, at that time last year, we were moving forward, redoing our city website and upgrading our website. Timing was perfect for us at the city engineer's office, because those past four years of work towards, you know, scanning and getting everything up to date, it really allowed us to move my vision forward of making sure that all information is available to the public. So all, most of the documents that we scanned, the GIS, all that is now readily available to the user through the website, and I appreciate Nick's efforts as the director of communications working with me and assisting us to make that vision become a reality. Next, I want to cover project coordination and weekly department meetings. So I meet with my staff once a week, typically on Thursdays. I block out two hours to my schedule. The purpose of that is to answer any questions that my staff might have, provide them updates with everything that I'm working on, and then also hold some accountability and see where they're at with their tasks. So that's been very beneficial in keeping us on track. And then project coordination meetings, the mayor, city administrator, director of communications, finance director, law director, as well as the president, CEO at TSEP, we meet twice a month, and we do the same thing for both public and private. And we do the same thing for both public and private projects throughout the city, just to make sure nothing's falling through the cracks, holding that accountability on everyone, answering questions, and streamlining all the projects moving forward. Next, I'll cover project management training and long-term citywide planning. So actually, last Monday, I gave a training presentation to all my fellow department heads. And that training focused on consultant and construction contracts and the management of them as well as labor compliance and prevailing wage requirements. And the purpose of that training was, as you'll see as we work through this presentation, we're getting stretched pretty thin at the engineer's office with all the upcoming work we have. All the fellow, my fellow department heads, they have lots of great ideas and projects they want to push forward in their offices as well. So we felt that if we created this training, I didn't want to be, we could maybe get them to manage some of their contracts on their projects. So my workload wasn't holding them back from moving great things for the city forward. Likewise, as Nick's transitioning into his new role, I've been talking to him quite frequently about long-term citywide planning. So as you'll see, as we work through this presentation, I'm very planning oriented. I like to have long-term plans as it relates to the city engineer's office. And as I said, there's a lot of other departments that have projects they want to accomplish as well. So this long-term planning initiative that I want to get done amongst all the departments, I think will be beneficial to the city in managing workload, making sure we're not taking on too much. And then there's advantages from the finance standpoint. And talking to Kathy, you know, we can look at long-term finance plans, maybe four or five years out. So instead of looking at it on a year-by-year basis, we know what projects we might be looking to do over the next five years from both a resource standpoint in regards to workload and funding. Next, I want to cover some program implementation and management. So aside from managing projects, this is a heavy lift for our office. We have a lot of programs that we manage, first and foremost being the long-term control plan. So this is our Ohio EPA mandated plan that requires us to reduce our combined sewer overflow events in our city to four per typical year. This, we have an estimated cost of $160 million remaining to implement this mandated plan, and that has to be done by 2040. Over the last year, we brought a consultant, MS Consultants onboard on our team to assist with that implementation. One of the major things that we got done with MS last year was developing a funding plan. And that funding plan was to bring the upcoming projects to their actual construction amount at the year that they're implemented. So when we adopted this long-term control plan back in 2017, planning for that started in 2015. And in 2015, if this was an $80 million plan, the plan was never prorated or inflated out to the actual year that the projects would go to implementation. So we worked with them on an individual project basis to get to a better estimated cost for each project as we move forward from a budgeting standpoint. So in addition to managing projects, working on the funding with MS Consultants, other things that we assist with, with long-term control plan management is flow monitoring. So like I said, the objective and goal of the long-term control plans to reduce our overflow events to four per typical year. So with the long-term control plan, we're required by the EPA to have six flow monitors in our system at all times at certain combined sewer overflow manholes. So each month, myself and Kevin Hughes from the wastewater treatment plant receive a report with those flow monitoring data for the month. And we'll continue to track that flow monitoring data as we continue to implement projects to see how successful we are with the work that we're doing. Also, myself and a lot of people here within the administration, we work diligently with Raftellus, a consultant in regards to sewer rates. So as we implement this $160 million plan, we need to continue to look at the sewer rates and make sure we have enough funding to pay for that plan. Likewise, to reduce the amount of combined sewer overflow events to four per typical year, one of the big things that needs to be accomplished to be successful with this plan is to get downspout removal through the city. So there's several departments and administration working together, working with private property owners. And I appreciate city council's support with the grant program in the past, trying to get as many downspouts disconnected from our combined and sanitary sewer systems. So that's pivotal to getting to that four overflow event per typical year. Additionally, we oversee our survey monument preservation program. So I started this program in 2020. It's kind of the surveyor in me in addition to being an engineer. What this plan does is preserve survey monuments in conjunction with our street paving program. So prior to paving a road, my office does research within our office and at the county offices to identify any survey monumentation that might be within the limits of a road that we're looking to pave. Then my staff and myself, we go out, we use a metal locator. We try to physically find those survey monuments. We dig them up within the road if we have to. Once we find monuments, we work with a local surveying company, Hankin Associates. They come out and they shoot each monument and put a GIS or GPS coordinate on that monument before we do the construction work. The construction work takes place. Any monument that might have been disturbed or obliterated from the construction project can then be reset off of those GPS coordinates. And then lastly, as part of that program, we work with our public works department, and we appreciate their coordination. We install a monument box at the pavement surface after the conclusion of the paving. And I think this program's going to be beneficial not only to the city and from the city's standpoint, it helps us easily, readily identify right-of-way locations throughout the city so we can go out physically, find that monument box really quickly on the surface instead of doing all that investigation work that I previously mentioned and measure over 30 feet if it's a 60-feet right-of-way and we know quickly where that right-of-way is. Likewise, preserving the monuments will be very beneficial to our residents in the future. If a resident needs a private survey done on their property, those monuments still exist. So when that private surveyor comes in to do that survey work, it's there and they can work off of it rather than having to recreate those points that might have been lost through construction. So benefit to both the city and our residents. Traffic signal warrant studies, when we move forward with those, we are now doing counts internally within our, traffic counts internally within our office as well as doing the study write-up. ADA transition plan, as you know, this is a long time coming. You had the request for legislation in council, to council this evening. And committee, the whole meeting's been set for the next meeting to discuss this. And I look forward to those continued discussions. Our office has had a lot of involvement with the creation of that ADA transition plan as it relates to our public right-of-ways. Culvert and bridge inspection programs, I'll discuss those later on in the presentation. Stormwater management program, this is another big one. This is another Ohio EPA mandated program. Being that we are an MS4 community, the Ohio EPA requires us to implement a stormwater management program. The stormwater management program is made up of six minimum control measures. The city engineer's office is primarily responsible for two of those minimum control measures, which relates to construction sites and then post-construction. So that chart on the bottom of the presentation breaks down the workload that is involved with that stormwater management program. And like I said, Ryan Steinmetz is going after a stormwater inspection certification, and this is where that comes into play. So the bottom row there, anytime a site, a construction site disturbs one or more acre of land, that site is required to develop a stormwater pollution prevention plan. And they're also required to get a permit from the Ohio EPA. But what the Ohio EPA did was put local requirements on that process. So in addition to getting their Ohio EPA permit, they're also required to get a stormwater permit from the city of Tiffin. Likewise, once they start construction, that construction site has to be inspected weekly or every time it rains a half an inch in a 24-hour period. So previously, prior to hiring Ryan, we were requiring all those inspections to be done by a third-party consultant. So any developer that came into our city had additional incurred costs, consulting fee costs to perform those inspections. And then those inspections were submitted directly to the city engineer's office for our review. When we brought Ryan on, we thought there was opportunity to provide those inspections for our developers to help continue to support development within our city. So we do now offer that developer the opportunity to either utilize a third-party consultant or they can utilize the city engineer's office to complete those inspections. And we do have a fee associated with those inspections, but I would like to think that it's probably a fraction of the cost is what they're paying the private consultant. So you can see there, it's 100-plus inspections a year just based off the development we have going on in our city. So then, once that construction site's finalized, most times those developments also require some sort of long-term stormwater facility, whether that's a detention basin, retention basin, underground storage facility, et cetera. So once that site's finalized and stabilized, we enter into an inspection and maintenance agreement with that property owner. And then all of these stormwater facilities are also required to be inspected on an annual basis by a certified professional. So again, before hiring Ryan, we were requiring those inspections to be done by a third-party consultant. But now we're also offering those services as well. So to date, we have 38 stormwater facilities in our city. 11 are public, 27 are private. And as we continue to develop our city, that number's only going to continue to grow. Right now, we're logging that there's four proposed facilities or facilities under construction. So 38 plus four, there could be 42 in the near future of inspections that need to be completed. So we're trying to assist with those endeavors as well. Active transportation plan, we're involved in the planning and project management for projects promoting our city trail system. Last year, we had the Trail Connectivity Project we were heavily involved with. Our street paving program, going back to the road and bridge levy, trying to ensure we have a fiscally responsible and effective plan for our streets. We maintain five-year plans for street paving. We drive our roads every three to five years, and we assign each block of every road a rating of one to five. We maintain a spreadsheet as well as part of our street paving program. We're managing it through GIS. And in that spreadsheet, you know, we're logging everything from the rating on a one-to-five basis to the number of curb ramps that have to be replaced at the time that road is paved, being that that's a federal requirement that we bring all the concrete curb ramps at the intersections into compliance. And with that, we're generating an estimated cost to pave each block of each street and town, which helps us establish that five-year plan. We also have five-year plans now from Aqua and Columbia Gas. So anybody in the administration that knows me, I'm pretty tough on our private utility companies. And we finally have five-year plans. So we can incorporate the year that those utility projects are going to take place on certain roads to try to minimize the impact and the investment on our roads and having them dug up by utility companies shortly after they're paved. And then finally, asset management development. This ties in with our GIS. So Brandon's doing a great job cammering the sewers before we pave roads to also try to protect that investment we're making with the additional road and bridge levy dollars. But we're trying to bring all aspects into our street paving program. So another thing that Ryan's doing as our field guy is he's going out and doing an inventory of all the signs on the streets that we're looking to pave in upcoming years. And he's doing a condition assessment as well as logging their locations and implementing that into GIS. And then Brandon can utilize that information that Ryan's collecting and then also go out and make sure our signs are compliant with OMUT CD standards at the same time that we're paving. So making a lot of strides there. And eventually, as we work through a paving cycle through the city and have paved all the roads, we'll have an asset inventory of the number of signs we have in our city. So there's a lot of good benefit there as well. Permitting, that's another thing that we do in our office. So I manage the floodplain permits, being the floodplain administrator for the city. As I said, Jason oversees the sewer taps, stormwater, and street cut permits. And then we have zoning permits, which is Dan Brickner. Last year, we did 200 zoning permits. So we're definitely busy on the zoning side. That was a little bit of a decline from 2020 and 2021. I think that was just attributed to 2020 and 2021, we saw a rise. And I think that was because of the stimulus money that was being handed out to the residents. They were reinvesting that back into their property. So I think 200's pretty standard. And as you can see on the chart on the right, we do break down those zoning permits into different categories. And a majority of our permits are fences, but we do break it down to the number of dwellings, garages, and et cetera. But one thing I do want to note, part of our zoning permit process is the applicant has to let us know what the estimated cost is for their construction. So we're tracking that through the permitting process. And last year, we were tracking, there was over $14 million in potential investment in our city just through the zoning standpoint. And that's private investment. And that's not even including private utility investment. So significant amount of investment in the community. In addition to permits, the engineer's office is also the secretary for the zoning board of appeals, the architectural board of review, the planning commission, and the board of control. Just between those four boards, we had 41 meetings last year. So that's a testament to bringing Dawn on, Dawn Wright on, from the administrative standpoint. Because being the secretary of those boards, obviously, we're responsible for preparing dockets, mailing those out to members of the public, advertising within the newspaper, doing meeting minutes, notice of decisions, things like that. So with, you know, our very robust facade enhancement program, we have a lot of architectural board of review meetings. So that administrative support's been key to our success as well. Grants and loans. So we definitely exhaust all efforts towards leveraging our local dollars with various federal, state, and local funding sources. With the bipartisan infrastructure law that was recently passed at the federal level through Congress, there's more funding available than ever. So we're doing our part, going after every opportunity that we can, but doing it within the realm of the resources we have available. As you can see there, last year, we had 11 submissions for grants and loans. I do want to highlight, we were successful with several of them, but three of them I'd like to highlight. We had the South River Road Trail Project. We got $22,000 from the Tiffin Community Foundation. For the 2023 OPWC Pavement Repair Program, we got a half a million dollar 0% loan. That's the maximum amount that we could receive. And then for the CSO Basin 24 and 30 Project, we got $5.9 million loan from WPCLF. That's a low-market loan, low-market rate loan. But of that $5.9 million, we received $4 million in principal forgiveness, which is essentially a grant. So of that $5.9 million, we'll only be required to pay on $1.9 million at a low-market rate, long-term. So very successful there. As you'll see in that chart, there's four that are TBD. That's to be determined for upcoming long-term control plan projects. So as I said, we're continuing to work with Raftellus from a sewer rate study standpoint. And whether or not we need to accept those loans that were offered to us will be determined based upon further conversation we're having from a rate study analysis. But one fun fact that there in the right-hand corner that I want to note is since 2018, the city engineer's office has brought in nearly 9.8 million and implemented in excess of 11.4 million in local, state, and federal grant funds for community infrastructure projects. So just in five years, we brought in almost, on average, $2 million a year in additional funding to our residents. A lot of that can be attributed to the road and bridge levy. And as we continue to say with the road and bridge levy, we're getting $2 of infrastructure improvements at $1 of local funding. So we've been very successful to date. The chart in the bottom left-hand corner is part of that planning initiative I'm talking about. I've identified all the I've identified all the different funding sources that are out there for various infrastructure projects, and with that, we're identifying several potential projects that could be utilized towards each funding source. And what we're doing here is just continuing to look at that, look at our long-term plan, trying to figure out, you know, when it makes most sense from a workload standpoint and from a financial standpoint of moving forward with certain grant applications. So lots of planning going on there in regards to finances and grants and loans. Next, want to get into the fun part, the project part. So in 2022, we completed six projects, first and foremost being the Rock Creek Wall Project. So this was a project that repaired a failing creek wall on Rock Creek down by Circular Street. You'll see a picture in the top-right-hand corner there. This was a ninety-five thousand dollar-plus project completed by RNI Construction. What we did was we removed that failing wall, we built a ready rock wing wall near the bridge, and then converted the wall into a natural stream bank. So that was a great project that was a long time coming. In addition to that, we did the plans and project management for Parks and Recreation Department for their project at Nature Trails Park, which installed the playground equipment and a walking path through the CDBG program. That project was completed by Helms &amp; Sons for just over a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars. We had our annual pavement repair program, which was also completed by Helms &amp; Sons, which updated ADA-compliant curb ramps and resurfaced seventeen different streets in our city, just over seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. We had our two Trail Connectivity Projects. We had two contracts for that project, which installed shared lane markings and signage on eleven-point-four miles of roadway. That included four-hundred-and-sixty-one pavement markings and two-hundred-and-sixty signs at a hundred-and-seventy-three different locations through the city. So that was quite a lift from the management standpoint, but we got through it, did a great job, got that project completed. And then lastly, we completed a culvert replacement project at the western end of Harvest Lane, near the Harvest Lane cul-de-sac. This project was identified through our culvert inspections that we had a failing culvert, so it was more or less an emergency project that we moved forward quickly last year. Since taking over, my objective as the city engineer has been to reduce the amount of money spent on consultants by overseeing as many phases of each project as possible internally within the city engineer's office. Bottom line, consultants aren't cheap. If you were going to pay a consultant to design any of these projects, you're probably going to see ten to fifteen percent of that cost would be the fee that we would pay a consultant. If you're going to pay a consultant to do the inspection on those projects, you're going to see that same ten to fifteen percent. So if we were using consultants from start to finish, add twenty to thirty percent on that investment. I'm proud to say that last year of those six projects, we only utilized a consultant for the design of the Rock Creek Wall Project and for the design of the Trail Connectivity Project. The only reason we used a consultant for the design of the Trail Connectivity Project was because of the expectation of timeline and turnaround, as well as we had a local donation to help offset that cost. If we had that expectation put on us, we would have done the design of that project internally within our office as well. So the rest of the design was all done in-house in the engineer's office, and all the construction management of all six projects was also done in-house within the city engineer's office. So very proud of the staff and its efforts and lots of cost savings to our residents. Looking forward to this upcoming year in our 2023 construction projects, we got a pretty heavy load in front of us, first being the Ellis Street River Bridge Replacement Project. We've awarded a contract in excess of four-point-one million dollars to ES Wagner, of which two-point-five million dollars, we have federal and state funding to offset that cost. Contractor actually mobilized out to site today, started removing some trees, but the one thing I will note is you will not have a twenty-four-seven closure of that road until after Memorial Day. So you'll see some spot work going on between now and then, some small road closures on a day-to-day basis outside the timeframe of pickup and drop-off for Tiffin Middle School, but that full road closure's not going to happen until after Memorial Day. And the reason for that was we wanted to reduce the impact on our residents as well as the impact on transportation to and from Tiffin Middle School. So if we would have started this project now, which the contractor would if they could, we would have been impacting the transportation system for Tiffin City Schools on two school years, both being this current school year and the upcoming. So we held that contractor back to really starting until after Memorial Day, and that project slated to be complete by sometime in November. Next, we have the East Perry Street Reconstruction Project. So we have an awarded contract just over nine-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand dollars with Helms &amp; Sons for this project, which ninety-five percent is funded by the ODOT Small Cities Program. So this project is fully rebuilding East Perry Street from Heidelberg University to the library. So we've gotten a lot of social media complaints in regards to this stretch of road for quite some time now, so this project's been a long time coming, but it's a full road reconstruction. So the last time this road was paved, within eight years, it was failing. So it told us it wasn't a surface problem, it was an underground problem. So this will be completely digging out the road, rebuilding it. We'll be doing that one lane at a time to maintain traffic, and that project slated to start this middle of May. We have our South River Road Trail Improvement Project, forty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars with cost construction, of which we got twenty-two thousand funded by the Tiffin Community Foundation. This is an enhancement to our current trail system, building a river overlook on the section of South River Road that was converted from a road to a trail. So that'll be a nice project for the city, enhancing our trail system. We got the CSO Twenty-four and Thirty Info Reduction Project, which has that estimated cost of five-point-nine million, of which we got that five-point-nine million dollar loan from WPCLF with the four million in principal forgiveness. This is the next required project for our Ohio EPA-mandated long-term control plan. This project area, the project areas for this project primarily are focused in the Calvert High School and Little Hedges Park area, so you'll see work on Rebecca Street, Anne Street, Park Place, Sean Hart Street, as well as the Frost Countout Stadium, Calvert Athletic Complex area of Charlotte Street, Second and Third Street, Front Street. We have our HSTS Illumination Project also moving forward this summer, estimated cost of just over one-point-six million dollars, which three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand's funded via the Ohio Water and Wastewater Grant Program. So what this project is doing is eliminating seventeen existing septic systems in our city and getting those properties tied into sanitary sewer. So we're doing sewer main extensions as well as lateral extensions from the home to a sewer main to get these properties connected to a sewer, which benefits our stormwater management program by reduces the amount of illicit discharges into our waterways from failing septic systems. Likewise, we're moving forward with our 2023 Urban Paving Project. We have an awarded contract with M&amp;B Asphalt in excess of five-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars, of which eighty percent is funded through the ODOT Urban Paving Program. This project will be resurfacing South Washington Street from St. Joe's Church south to Kraut School, as well as resurfacing West Market Street from Elmer Street to Sandusky Street. So that'll be a great project. And lastly, we have our 2023 Pavement Repair Program, which is being proposed to resurface those roads listed in the top-right-hand of the slide, has an estimated cost of six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, of which we have the five-hundred-thousand-dollar zero percent loan from the Ohio Public Works Commission. So the one thing I want to note, and that I'm most proud of with these projects that we're moving forward next year, everybody's probably noted, every project that I just mentioned has some sort of funding source or loan behind it to offset the cost. So just a testament going back to the efforts that we're putting towards leveraging our local dollars, again, with the state and federal funds that are out there. Likewise, if you add those costs up of all the projects, it exceeds thirteen million dollars in construction that we're looking to move forward this year. I went back in our records, and from 2015 to 2018, over that four-year span, we did eight-and-a-half million total. If you go back and look from 2019 to 2022, we did twenty-five million total over that four-year span, of which more than half of it was associated to the recent project we did out the wastewater treatment plant. So to do thirteen million in one year, you know, that's going to be a pretty heavy lift for us. So in addition to that lift, we're also going to be providing support to all the additional private utility projects that we see going on through the city. So Columbia Gas has a lot of work proposed. They're already working currently on West Market Street. I'm sure everybody's driving around those detours on a daily basis. So after they're done with that project, they got another, a large project they're moving on to. Aqua, Aqua's got a lot of work they're proposing in the city in investment. Currently, they're working up in the Huss Street area, Grand Avenue area, North Sandusky Street area. When they're done there, they have another project to go on to as well. And then we all know we have the Omni Fiber Project, which is proposing high-speed fiber throughout our entire city. So in addition to putting our resources towards managing our public projects, we're also putting resources towards managing, overseeing those private utility projects to make sure restoration's complete and that they're doing their work in our right-of-way to our specifications. So in addition to that, we'll be involved in, I'm sure, several other private development projects outside of private utility projects, so we got a pretty heavy lift year ahead of us this upcoming year. Next, want to talk about culverts. So as I said, Ryan's going to be our culvert inspector moving forward. We inspect our road culvert, so any pipe that goes underneath our roadways per the ODOT culvert inspection manual. So we assign a rating of one to nine on our culverts, one being poor, nine being good. Any culvert that's rated four or less is inspected annually. Any culvert that has a rating of five or better and has a diameter of forty-eight inches or bigger is inspected every five years, and any culvert that has a rating of five or better and has a diameter less than forty-eight inches is inspected every ten years. So we have identified that we have thirteen culverts that run under our roadways, and as you can see there, we have two culverts that are rated four or less currently, one being on South River Road, which is not as big of a concern to me anymore because it's actually on the section that we converted to a trail. So it was previously under a road, and then when we converted that section of roadway to a trail, that culvert's now under a trail. We have a culvert on South Sandusky Street, near Cottage Avenue, that's actually rated a three. There's a picture of that on the lower left of the presentation. It's a brick-lined culvert where a lot of the brick are starting to fall out of it. So it is our plan to move forward with efforts towards replacing that culvert once the Ellis Street River Bridge is completed. So from a financial standpoint, we have our road and bridge levy dollars that were coming in. We were trying to maximize the amount we're spending on our roads while keeping enough money there to make sure we weren't taking out any long-term loans on the Ellis Street River Bridge. So once that Ellis Street River Bridge is completed, that money we were kind of always setting off to the side in regards to that upcoming bridge project, we can then utilize towards making sure we get this culvert replaced. Likewise, I want to note, we had two other culverts that used to be rated four or less prior to this past year. So I made mention about the Harvest Lane culvert replacement, so we obviously replaced that culvert and took its condition rating up beyond that four level. And then the middle two pictures on the presentation actually is the Mohawk Street culvert, and want to give a lot of credit to our Public Works Department. So they use our culvert inspections as a basis to see where they can help prolong the lifespan of our structure. So they went out and internally did that project, and you can see a before and after of the inlet of the Mohawk Street culvert, and they did a lot of great work there, and it's now rated a six, and it'll last us for many years to come for their efforts that they did internally. Next, want to talk about our bridges. So like our culverts, we have thirteen bridges that we are required to maintain and eventually replace within our city. The bridges that we're responsible for are the bridges on our local roads. Any bridge that's on a state route like the Market Street, Perry, Washington, we're not responsible for those future replacements. These inspections are actually completed by a consultant for free of charge to the city through ODOT's Municipal Bridge Inspection Program. So that's a great program that the ODOT offers cities like us, and then the consultant will provide those inspection reports to me after they're completed. Like culverts, the bridges are also rated on a one-to-nine scale, one being bad, nine being good. You'll also see there that there, behind that general appraisal rating by number, there's also a designation of an A or a P. A means there's no restriction, P means there's a posted load restriction. So I just want to make everybody clear that just because a bridge has a posted load restriction doesn't mean the bridge is failing by any means. That all just goes back to originally when that bridge was designed. It was designed to sustain a certain load going over it. So the only, and another thing I want to note is federal funding typically doesn't become available on bridges until they're rated four or less. So four seems to be that threshold of when a bridge is starting to fail. Right now, we only have one bridge that's rated four or less, and it's rated a four, and it's the Ellis Street River Bridge. So once we get this bridge project complete this summer, our bridges are in pretty good shape moving forward, and that's all good to, that all dates back to good stewardship and good maintenance that's been done for past years. Almost done, getting into long-term planning. Again, planning's a big thing of mine. I said, you know, I'm projecting plans many years out. On the left there, you'll see the city engineer's office's long-term plan, and I got a long-term plan on projects from a construction and a design standpoint all the way out to 2029. And a lot of the reasoning is behind that is because of the Ohio EPA-mandated long-term control plan projects that we have ahead of us. So this plan, like I said, will help us, you know, determine one, financial feasibility, as well as do we have enough workload, staffing to manage the workload that's ahead of us? On the right-hand side, that all goes back to that street paving discussion that I had earlier, right? I talked about, we maintain five-year plans for street paving. That image on the top is how we utilize our GIS system to manage our street paving, and then the image on the bottom right there, that's showing the spreadsheet that we utilize for street paving planning. So we maintain a five-year plan for street paving in addition to long-term planning for our overall project. So jumping into my last slide, as with every presentation, I've always established goals for the city engineer's office. I think in order to be successful, we have to be goal-oriented. Since taking over in 2019, I've knocked a lot of the goals off on a year-by-year basis, and I think a lot of that had to do with, we had a lot of short-term goals as we were completely rebuilding the office. I think over the last four years, we're now to the point where that rebuild's really over. We're just really trying to sustain and develop the staff. So as you see, as I moved from 2021 goals to now 2023 goals, there's less goals there, and those goals are more long-term oriented as we move forward. So of the 2021 goals, there's really only one left, and it goes back to that continuous thing that I keep saying, which is to develop staff to promote sustainability while also providing a high level of service. And that chart there shows just me, it doesn't get into my staff, on how much overtime we work on an annual basis in order to keep up with the demand in the office. You know, it takes a lot of energy to meet the demands we place on ourselves, as well as meeting the demands that are placed on us. I think we've made a lot of progress in the last year. You'll see that number has diminished a little bit, but I still think we got a long ways to go. We're not quite there yet, but like I said, we pride ourselves in providing a high level of service in everything that we do. So whether it's a project, whether it's a permit, that is one thing that we drive. So whether it's a project, whether it's a permit, that is one thing that, that we drive, that I try to drive into, to the employees of the offices, we bring a high level of service. And again, that takes a lot of energy. And as we looked at that long-term plan, you know, the, the future's not slowing down. There's a lot of work ahead of us. We have that Ohio EPA mandated long-term control plan. So making sure that we're trying to balance that workload and creating that sustainability, I think, is key to continuing our success moving forward. And then triggering off of that, develop staff to promote sustainability while also providing a high level of service. The three goals that I'm now creating moving forward from 2023, I feel really strongly tie off of that. And the first goal being successfully implement Phase One of the city's Ohio EPA mandated long-term control plan. So as I said, that's a $160 million implementation plan that has to be done by 2040. Our plan is very front-end loaded. So at 2030, we have to have what's called a programmatic review with the Ohio EPA where we look to see how successful we were with our Phase One implementation. So Phase One is from now till 2030. Phase Two is from 2030 to 2040. From now to 2030, we have over 100 million of that 160 remaining to get implemented. So we want to make sure we're doing things right over Phase One, so we're not costing ourselves additional dollars in Phase Two. So this is a big goal of mine moving forward, is to making sure that we're doing everything correctly, crossing all the Ts, dotting the Is, and doing everything with our, again, high level of service as we're implementing these projects through Phase One. The second one being, continue to effectively manage the city's road and bridge levy. The city's road and bridge levy has taken us to a new level. We build a fiscally responsible, effective plan. I've said we're getting $2 of infrastructure improvements for every $1 of local investment. We can, we need to continue to exhaust all efforts towards bringing those dollars in and continue to show our residents the value of the road and bridge levy through transparency and implementing the plan that we currently have in place. And then lastly, it's that long-term planning, and, and you know, that ties into creating that sustainability. But in addition to long-term planning, I also think that, and myself as the city engineer, I'm starting to challenge myself more of looking at projects from a different perspective. So, you know, I think what we've done to date's been great, but a lot of what we've done's been remove-and-replace-in-kind, more so maintenance projects. But our city's continuing to grow, and when the original infrastructure in certain areas might have been developed, you know, it was developed towards that time period. So, you know, Westgate, you know, a lot of that was developed in the seventies, the eighties, downtown and streetscaping seventies, eighties. Do we have the same demand in those areas today as what we did in the seventies and eighties? So we need to start looking into our designs on a more futuristic approach and see what we can do to benefit the city and bring our city to a new level and have those areas of town match, you know, the demands that are being placed on them today. So that's all I got. So I appreciate everyone's time. As always, it's an honor to present to city council. It's an honor to be your city engineer, and I can promise you that we'll continue to exhaust all efforts to continue to provide the utmost service to the community and continue, continue to move us forward. So with that, open it up for any questions.
Councilmember Smart.
Well, first of all, can you put a franchise tag on an engineer? Just keep him like a quarterback? No? Okay. I do have a question though about the GIS program, the, the program, that's a municipal? I mean, is it designed around them for, for municipalities?
Yeah, so really what it is, it's, it's got GIS characteristics, but it's also like a work order-based system. So it works really well for our Public Works Department, and Brandon's transitioning into logging work orders on there, which makes it easier for him to do reports, things like that. But it, it's, we, we have, we have data collectors, we use iPads, we can go out in the field and make changes readily available in the field. And it's very user-friendly, not only to us from an engineering standpoint, but even the Public Works employees are, are able to make changes to the maps, and, and we're getting a benefit all the way across the board.
I, I think I know the answer to the, thank you for that. I think I know the answer to this, but because of the way GIS programs operate and the layers, how does this, have you run into any problems with the county's GIS program overlaying over that? Is there any back and forth between the county and the city?
No, we're using different platforms.
Right.
But we can utilize their layers and drop them into ours.
That's what I thought. I have one more question, and that is about the downspout disconnect you were talking about. How many properties do you, do you even know how many properties there were, and how many are left to be disconnected?
No, but I can tell you, we went after, we, this initiative started on a project-by-project basis. We're moving forward with the CSO 24 and 30 project, correct? In that project area alone, we identified a potential of 60 properties that could potentially have downspouts connected. So that's a huge undertaking to work with 60 different private property owners to try to get them to come into compliance. So again, Kevin Hughes, Jason Mortar, our law director, kudos to all of them and the efforts that they're putting towards that. I've tried to sit on the sideline as much on, on that one as possible with everything else we have going on, so I tip my hat to all of them for the efforts they're making. But as we continue to work through this $160 million plan, we're only going to continue to identify more properties, and that's only going to continue to be a big lift for us as a city to try to get that compliance.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
I have one question going back to the culvert ratings. Lewis Street has a rating of six, 6A, I believe. That went from a stream running from essentially the railroad tracks behind National Machinery all the way to Market Street. At one time, that was open, and along Lewis Street, now it's all encapsulated, and we have dirt over the top of it, and that's still a 6A rating?
So the only thing that we're physically doing the inspection on at this time is the culvert that goes under the roadway at Greeley Street.
Okay.
The ditch along Lewis Street, those are private culverts because they're driveway culverts serving access to the residents of the development on Lewis Street. So we've been involved in the construction of those culverts through our right-of-way and street cut permitting process, but those are our maintenance responsibility long-term. Unless, obviously, it became a problem and we weren't able to work with a property owner to come into resolution, and, and it's creating flooding problems, then obviously, we'd have to figure a way to step in. But at this time, we're not logging those individually.
We also have a funding program for downspouts as well, available?
That's correct. So any downspout that is currently connected to a combined or sanitary sewer, the city offers 100% reimbursement, up to $1,000 to assist that property owner to disconnect that downspout and come into compliance with our codified ordinances.
Thank you.
Coming into tonight, obviously, we both had reports, and I didn't know which one was going to be longer, but I'm willing to concede that yours is a little longer than mine. Just wanted to make a quick comment, how lucky we are to, to have Matt as our city engineer, and how much money their department does save the city of Tiffin. It's, it's pretty impressive. The one thing I love about all of his projects and the, you know, the, going forward, he always has a dollar amount to it, which is awesome, and how, and, and how it's going to get funded, which I love. Because anybody can throw out, yeah, we got to get this done, we got to get this done, but then when you actually say, well, how are we going to pay for it? Well, I don't know. Someone, you know. So I, I do appreciate all the, the homework that you put into this before you bring it to, to council, and just keep up the good work. I know if Dan Perry was the engineer, the time of donated overtime back to the city might be zero, but I thank you for that as well. So that's all I got.
Any other questions for the engineer? Thank you, Matt.
Well, Matt, did you want to call on your special friend?
You guys run the meeting, so that's up to you guys.
That is your choice. We have a plant in the audience that would like to ask a question.
I'm open to whatever questions anybody might have.
I'm going to pass my bedtime now. You know, I thought my wife was long-winded, but I think you've got to be.
He better go, he better go to bed.
What are you going to do, repave the street in front of Mayor's home?
I would have to go back and look at the five-year plan, but it's, it's not based on who lives there, it's based on rating. That five-year plan was developed prior to any changes in the administration. It's, it's stuck where it is, and, but, but your whole neighborhood, you know, all those roads were all put in at the same time, and we've been doing a lot of paving back there because they're all failing at the same time. So I would say that more than likely, your road's coming in the very near future, just as a basis of past precedent around the rest of the neighborhood.
Work being done on the mentioned street is public work, so it has nothing to do with the engineer's office at this time.
But it is probably, it is probably in advance of paving the road.
Yes, it is.
To, to make sure that, you know, we, we get a lot of damage on our roads from, from garbage trucks and additional load on that. So that is another thing that Public Works is doing, is going out and trying to fix those areas where it ruts up a year or two in advance of paving as well, to give that extra base time to settle.
And you're having a hard time.
And I really appreciate you being here.
That's why he wanted you here. But Matt, in all seriousness, we all realize that you and your team are the true workhorses for this, the city, and we really do appreciate all the time and talent and energy you put into everything and all the training that you, you do also. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate your report this evening, even though they're teasing you about it. Nice job, as always.
Thank you.
On the downspout, okay, mine are going into the sewer. They have diverters on the bottom, and I can either put them in the sewer or I'll put them up in the yard. Now, I want to get rid of those this year, but you can sheet it up. How do you apply for that money?
So, so that grant is through our wastewater treatment plant. So if you reach out to, to them, their phone number would be on our website, and I would talk to Kevin Hughes out there, the plant superintendent, and he should be able to assist you through that process.
Okay, moving on to my report. I think that's it from the audience. Okay, updates. I would like to congratulate the chamber on reaching their 500-member benchmark. That is awesome, and I know it took a lot of hard work and commitment from the chamber team to get there. Great job, everyone, and keep going. Eight of us from council and the city team attended TSEP's annual dinner meeting on March 2nd at Camden Falls. Nick, Brent, and I attended the American Red Cross Adult First Aid CPR and AED training offered by the chamber, and we have received our two-year certificates to render aid. So we are well-trained. On Friday, March 3rd, I attended a luncheon and set up a later date to tour the Seneca County Opportunity Center. I spoke with Lou Hurst just the other day and want to work with him on their new project out at the cancer facility with some crosswalks and stuff he talked to me about. Also, on Friday, we interviewed candidates for the Director of Operations and Constituent Services position. We have selected someone, and they are going through the hiring process now, and we will make that introduction to all of you at our next council meeting on the 20th. Upcoming events in March, this one is farther out, but wanted to promote it now. Chamber is launching a new event, Be a Tourist in Your Own Town, March 24th through the 26th, and it'll be noon to 4:00 PM each day. Nick and I will be attending Pivot Court on the 9th, and so speaking of the 9th, I bet you thought I forgot, our very own city administrator, Dale Thornton, is officially retiring, and that will be his last day here at the city hall. We have a special gift for you from the city and the city council members. I want to thank you for your leadership, guidance, and friendship since joining the Tiffin team. I will miss you very much and so appreciate you staying on longer than you had planned to help. We wish you nothing but the best in your next chapter of life, and so Kathy has been hiding it for us.
My granddaughter and I tease each other. She always says, I miss you, and I always say, I miss you more. And I think that's true of this group too. While I might be missed, I think I will miss you more.
I don't know, I heard you out in the hallway today saying you weren't counting the days, but it's four.
When it gets off my fingers and toes, then I know how many they are. Oh, this is very nice. I appreciate this a great deal, and this will go in my den in a very prominent place. So thank you all so very much for your comradeship, your support, your friendship, and your association. I have truly enjoyed the last seven years. In fact, today is my seven-year anniversary. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the candy jar.
I refilled it, but somebody's been in there, so I've got to get a couple more bags yet.
That concludes my report, but I didn't know if anybody would like to add anything.
I'm sorry, we're new to this, so are we supposed to, like, speak out, like, to be able to talk, or?
There is a...
If we wanted to bring up, we didn't know we missed the opportunity.
So there's an oral communications section that's coming up here a little bit. Yeah, no, that's okay, no, you're fine.
I've never been here, so.
No, you're good, you're good.
You're good.
No worries.
This is a little longer than usual, so understand.
No, I'll, I'll just echo what the mayor said, though. Dale, it's been incredible to work with you over my time on council, and I think I speak for everyone to say, like, thank you so much for your commitment and your dedication to the city. You've always gone above and beyond, and I really appreciated working with you, and hopefully, we stay close, stay friends, don't be a stranger, come to council meetings. Maybe not when Matt's giving a report.
I'll pick my report. I feel the same, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, thank you. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Madam President.
And Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. So we are now under written communications.
We have mayor's request for legislation number 23-19, sewer and easement for Fairview Hill condominium development.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-19 will be referred to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
Excuse me, Madam President, this is the one where we'll need to add an easement for HSTS elimination project.
Okay, so that will also be included and referred to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-20, ADA transition plan.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-20 will be discussed in the committee of the whole meeting scheduled for March 20th at 6:00 PM in council chambers.
2022 Tiffin Fostory Municipal Port Annual Report.
This will be held on file in the clerk's office. Thank you.
That concludes the written communication.
Thank you. We are now under oral communication, so anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself.
Sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
I don't know how any of this works.
Go ahead.
No, you sign in.
All right, we're going to keep this simple. We have a utility vehicle that we licensed two years ago. Just before the first year, my wife got pulled over in town, even though we'd been in town, eating Madison Street, wherever, and Tiffin cops wave bananas, sheriff, whatever. Finally, my wife got pulled over. She was heading into Walmart, and a Tiffin cop stopped her. It's fully licensed, you know, turn signals horned, everything. Well, then we found out that there was a city ordinance evidently against utility vehicles. We actually looked into this, spoke with a Tiffin, a Tiffin cop, and he said, you know, we should be fine as long as it's licensed. Like I said, we got away with this a year and a half, and then we find out there's an issue with it, which we weren't aware of. And so we're here to kind of address that a little bit, so y'all can kind of like see what we have. We found out after talking to several people that there is actually a lot of people that would prefer, you know, to drive these. The problem is, it was really hard to get this utility vehicle licensed through the state of Ohio, because they want to include it, they want, they classify it like a golf car, a mini truck, but it's nothing like them, you know? And, well, we got a school bus-type truck, you know? Tiffin's a little tight on parking. Tiffin's a little tight on parking, so we'll always take that into town to eat, because it's easier to park it. And if that's down or it's all clean, well, we can take that. It's always been real convenient for us for a long time. And then we find out that there's a problem with that. We don't come through town and hot-rod with it or anything like that, but we had to go through quite a bit to get this thing licensed. So I would like, you know, Jeana, to drop off, like, pictures and everything, so y'all can look at it quick.
I don't know if I have enough for everybody. Do you have many to...
Motor mouth might have to skip out.
It was only 54 minutes and 30 seconds.
There's enough that I apologize. We're a little short.
I got this one here, but it was supposed to be our copy, but I'm not for sure.
It's okay. We can share it, too.
Yeah, we can share.
But you can kind of see the pictures.
We wanted to make sure that y'all see what it actually is. I mean, this thing has, you know, backup cameras, turn signals.
It's like a little vehicle. It's just, it's just a little bit bigger than one of them smart cars.
There was a spec sheet there that lists everything about it, like, you know, its weight, length, width. We understand the concern from talking to people that, I think, part of the city council, and I don't know, can't read y'all's minds, but part of the thing that we're finding out is that, you know, you're afraid of it being, you know, impeding traffic. And I can assure you, this thing, you know, utility vehicle won't impede traffic. In fact, there's a picture of us speeding, but not within the city limits. We literally took a picture of it, like, not at top speed, but close.
What is its top speed?
It's 70 mile an hour. But not all of them do that. But I can assure you that pretty much all the utility vehicles that have dump beds will not impede traffic within the city limits of Tiffin. And we had a hard time licensing this thing, because even when you purchase them, they want to title them as an ATV, which is off-road vehicle only. Then you have to go to the title office, get the title switched to a utility vehicle. Then the only way you can do that is with having a dump bed, and there's certain criteria. Went through all that, got in, you know, turn signal kit horned and everything, got all that out, you know, followed all the rules. Thought we were good for a year and a half, until she got busted, so...
Law Director.
Yeah, hi. I'm the Law Director for the city. What is the status of the, I guess, any case? Were you cited for this?
No. He didn't know how to really deal with it. And I know he talked to Rob Boar. And Rob's all aware of it also, and he's, he explained to him and told him that as long as it was licensed, he thought that it would be okay. So there wasn't really, from what I understand, there wasn't really anything really in the works that you guys have for such a vehicle versus, I mean, I know you, you know, I know you guys are against golf carts and such, but this here is way nothing like a golf cart. The only thing that it doesn't have that a regular vehicle would have is airbags. It doesn't have airbags, but you have, like, them little smart cars that are about the same size as this, you know? I mean, it's just, I don't know really what else to say about it, other than it's like a little vehicle.
So for right now, the police, they understand the type of vehicle, and they've accepted that it's not a... It's not in violation of any code section.
No, there's no, not that I'm aware of. There was no violation of any code. It was just, he didn't know really what to, how to deal with it. And I know when he called Rob, Rob told him as long as it was licensed, it should be okay, and we have it licensed and everything. And then he just kind of let me go, because he had to talk to you. And then he talked to you, and then it kind of went from there to this.
Yeah, I remember a brief phone call that we had.
It's been a while.
And it's been a while. So I think everything is okay now. I guess I didn't get as much detail. I appreciate this. This is very helpful to me to understand, because there's different vehicles in the code, and they're defined differently. Some are allowed, as they may be. Others need legislation by the local city, like golf carts, that have not been accepted. So what I will do is I'll follow up with Sergeant Boar and just go through and verify things. And can I get back to you? Is there, if you can provide me maybe with information?
Yeah, you can take my number or even Jerry's. I mean...
No, cover.
You can write it down. Why don't you write it down there, so you may not want to air it out over the world?
We do appreciate y'all's time on this. We're, we want to do it right, you know? We went through licenses this, instead of throwing a slow-moving vehicle on the thing, you know? You know, we're trying to do it all right, and we were like, okay, we're not going back in town until we figure this all out, you know?
No, we appreciate you coming to make sure it gets straightened out.
It might not be helpful that you got on the back window Marvin's Offroder.
That is the dog. That is Marvin's toy.
I can show you a picture, and he's just like, if I'm working on it in the shop, changing oil, he's got to be right there in the cab. He cannot be out of that machine.
He will sit there all day long, because we use it around with, to do yard work and such like that. We drive it everywhere, out, outside, before, we drove it everywhere in town before I got caught, but we were, we drive it everywhere.
You could say caught. We found one police officer that was like, whoa, what's up with this, you know? Maybe he didn't see the license plate, because it's like underneath the bed a little bit.
Yeah, because we passed, we passed each other. I was heading towards Walmart, and we passed each other. He was going the other direction, and I seen him pull around, and I'm like, I wonder what he's doing, you know? So, because we've passed several states, sheriffs, police, just Tiffin PD, I mean, you know? And the way that is, or they just, I've had him behind me, and I'm like, oh, am I going to get pulled over or what? And they just let me go, so I don't know if there was a quite anything to deal with such a vehicle, because I think this is all kind of new. Like, they're starting to get a little bit more popular, and people are driving them more as a vehicle than what they are. This thing has AC, heat, I mean, it's got more.
Bluetooth.
Yeah.
Backup cameras, got it all.
Does it have bumpers, though? I keep looking at this.
Yeah, it has a bumper. Yeah, yeah.
Front and back?
Pretty cool. Thank you. What size motor does this have?
It's 1,000 cc.
I kind of figured it might be more with 82 horsepower and...
Yeah. Well, with my slight modifications, it might have a little bit more horsepower than that.
Well, you take a look at a lot of the smaller cars now, like Kia, even Ford, Mazda, whatever. I mean, we're getting, we're getting down to 1.7 and lower liters of motor.
Right, and they're getting crazy horsepower out of them.
Yeah, well, they got turbo to do it, but yeah, this...
I thought about turbo in ours, but I thought it might not be a good idea. She might get a speeding ticket.
64 miles an hour already, I hear.
Well, I wanted to show you guys that it will go up to speed, so...
No, because like, we really thought, we didn't know what to expect here. We really thought that this may be, because it's getting thrown into a classification as a golf cart, so it might be because it's impeding traffic, and we wanted to let y'all know that it's definitely not the case. I mean, it's a safe vehicle. I mean, we take it to the mountains in West Virginia, so it's for sure safe. But we were just like, I, it was kind of funny. We were in town getting something to eat. I don't know where we, Chinese restaurant or something. We were, we literally, like, I'm like, what's up with this dude? He's like following us, like...
Oh, yeah. He followed us all the way back to the house.
We don't even know. He followed us all the way to the house. We live over by where Seneca Hills Golf Course used to be. He followed us all the way over there, poling our driveway. I'm like, what did we do, you know? Who's this dude? He just wanted to know how we got it licensed, because they're that hard to get licensed. I mean, they're not, it's not an easy thing to do.
And like, they can't, they can't get them, the sporty ones, like the racers and stuff like that, they can't get those licensed. So it's not like you're going to see those driving around town. These are kind of...
Yeah, this is the only...
The old...
Well, we appreciate you guys coming to council to make sure it gets straightened out, and yes, Councilman Perry.
Was that guy following you, was his name Ken Jones?
I don't remember.
Does the windshield pop up on this thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's...
I think it was Kevin Hughes.
Kevin Hughes, yeah. Kevin really wants us to go through. But this isn't a golf cart to me. This thing's pretty, I mean, it's in a class of its own.
And that's kind of what we're thinking, you know, because you can't compare it to anything else.
So that's where we're kind of like...
Right. I just commend you guys for, you know, doing it the right way and coming to council and bringing this, you know? This is pretty cool.
Yeah, I'm not doing well, not being able to drive it.
Right, this is awesome. You provided pictures and spec sheet and everything, so we knew exactly what you're talking about, so...
Law Director.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is after I talk to Officer Boar and do a little bit more research on this and talk to you, at the next meeting, I can give council a report and explain the legality of this type of vehicle being operated on a city street, okay? But I'll be back in touch with you. I'll give you a call with the number you gave me.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Now, if I don't answer, just leave a message, and I'll get back with you, so, because I'm kind of busy with work and stuff, so...
Okay, sure.
I'll definitely get back with you.
If you need to call me back in the evening, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you guys very much.
All right, well, thank you all for your time. We appreciate your patience during the long meeting. That's how it got named, because it's his machine, so...
I can show you a picture with his little hat on. His winter hat.
He went out and get firewood and stuff. He's got to have his little hat on, because it's cold.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Are we okay to leave? Or, okay, thank you. You guys have a good night.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to address council this evening? Okay, we will move on to motions. Are there any motions this evening? Okay, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Thank you. We have Resolution Number 23-5, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund, WPCLF agreement, on behalf of the City of Tiffin for planning, design, and/or construction of wastewater facilities involving CSO Basin 24 and 30 Inflow Reduction Project, designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the third reading of Resolution 23-5. Councilmember Thacker.
I move to accept Resolution 23-5.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of Resolution 23-5. Is there a second, Councilmember Spar?
Yes, I second Councilmember Thacker's motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Wilkins.
Yes. Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Wilkins.
Yes. Resolution 23-5 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution Number 23-13, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving mayor's reappointment of Bill Black to serve a term on the Sandusky County, Seneca County City of Tiffin Port Authority from the effective date of this resolution until March 1, 2027.
This is the first reading of Resolution 23-13. Councilmember Perry.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to ask for passage of Resolution 23-13.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Resolution 23-13. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted City Council to know I did my homework. I got ahold of the mayor. She gave me some information on Mr. Black, so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Wilkins.
Yes. Resolution 23-13 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution Number 23-14, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Fred Shelt to serve a term on the zoning board of appeals from the effective date of this resolution until December 31, 2025.
This is the first reading of Resolution 23-14. Councilmember Perry.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to ask for passage of Resolution 23-14.
There's a motion for passage of Resolution 23-14. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted fellow councilmembers to know I did my homework, got ahold of the mayor. She gave me some information on Mr. Shelt, so...
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Wilkins.
Yes. Resolution 23-14 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance Number 23-4, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded, or the city administrator to competitively bid for the purchase of road salt.
This is the third reading of Ordinance 23-4. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of Ordinance 23-4.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Ordinance 23-4. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Wilkins.
Yes. Ordinance 23-4 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance Number 23-5, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker.
Orderance 23-4 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Orderance number 23-5, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Orderance authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, and recommend and execute a contract for the 2023 paving program, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 23-5. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of ordinance 23-5.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 23-5. Is there a second? Councilmember Perry.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Wilkins.
Yes. Orderance 23-5 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Orderance number 23-6, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Orderance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for engineering, design, and consulting services for flow monitoring as part of the city's sanitary sewer long-term control plan.
This is the third reading of ordinance 23-6. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of ordinance 23-6.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 23-6. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Wilkins.
Yes. Orderance 23-6 passes with a vote of 7 to 0.
Orderance number 23-7, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Orderance authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, and recommend and execute a construction contract for the CSO Basin 24 and 30 Inflow Reduction Project, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 23-7. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for passage of ordinance 23-7.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 23-7. Is there a second? Councilmember Spar.
I second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?